Okay, we are recording.
Thank you. Great. Hello, everybody. I'm Mayor Marion Klaas welcoming you to our City of Clyde Hill Council Meeting for Tuesday, May the 10th of 2022. We are again conducting this virtually due to the ongoing pandemic, although there will and maybe changes in the near future. We have an item on our agenda for that level of discussion. So thank you for supporting this venue and look forward to our meeting tonight. Calling us to order and Courtney, how are we with our roll call?
All council members are present.
Very excellent. So what I will ask you to do wherever you might be is stand and I'll put up the display here of the Pledge of Allegiance and join me in that if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Let me get that out of the way. Move that over here. And pull this up over there. All right. Sometimes I still wish I had three or four more screens. And even with that, it may not be enough. We'll see. Okay, so we are going to go ahead and proceed on in our usual 1.1 area is the revised rules and orders for our virtual participation. I think everyone's pretty comfortable with that by now and really appreciate everyone's support of that venue. It's hard to do. I know. We want to get back to in-person meetings as soon as we can. We're on Section 2.1. This is a consideration of a motion to approve the agenda for tonight unless you would like to offer any amendments. Councilmember Hakamovic.
I would like to ask to add an item 10.3, Consideration of a Proclamation Regarding the National Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day. Additionally, following conversation with Councilmember Jones, a few other suggested changes up to the council, of course. Moving Section 10, motions for consideration ahead of Section 5 New Business. Within Section 5, request to move item 5.4, Discussion of Fire Station 5 Replacement, to the next meeting, given that this item does not appear to be critical path to any other work. And while it makes a recommendation, it's probably best considered as part of the Facilities Master Plan or the Fire Station Development Agreement. Also, 5.2, the discussion of the Public Participation Plan, given all the other items on the agenda tonight, hoping we can put a time bound on this item. And finally, regarding item 5.7, is there a time critical element to this discussion because there is or approval or guidance that the administration is looking to counsel for because there is no cover sheet or context for this beyond the 2016 agreement? So that last bit's a question, I guess, before there's an action.
Yeah, I'd like to keep that on if we can. That'll be in an important discussion.
Great. So then it's the 5.4 postponement to next, the putting a time bound. I'm not sure how much time people want, how much time the administration is looking for for this Public Participation Plan discussion. And also with Councilmember Jones, adding an item 12, adding an item to Section 12, Discussion of an Agenda and Calendar Committee, for the sake of improving how the council helps the agenda get completed in a timely, more focused way. Thank you.
So under 12, you wanted to add another, I'm sorry, clarify what you wanted me to add for 12.
Sure, just an item under, another item under Section 12 for discussion of, in the future at some point, a discussion of an Agenda and Calendar Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. There is a motion to make those changes. Is there a second from the council?
A second. Kim?
Is there any further discussion? Dean R., is your hand up?
Yeah, sorry, I was muting and I couldn't mute and put my hand up at the same time. My only thought to the, was looking if I heard it all right, to table the Fire Station 5 discussion. We meet with Bellevue Fire tomorrow, so we were kind of hoping to at least be able to tell them just some general update on where we are with that property next door. That's the only thing related to that. There's some time element involved.
All right. What do you guys think about that?
I have no objection to keeping it on the agenda then. I mean, that's fine. I didn't realize it was a time critical nature of that, so.
I agree.
All right. All right. So then we'll leave 5.4 in and all the other changes are as amended. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, what's the time? How many minutes do you on the public participation plan? I wasn't sure.
Oh, okay. John Greenwood, what was the timeframe we had given Eric?
I'm hoping to have a conversation in 10 minutes or less.
For Section 5.2?
For Section 5.2, presuming there is not substantive input from the council verbally.
Okay. So 10 minute for the presentation and then whatever you guys need to contribute. So keep it to 15. Does that sound all right? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Great, we have an agenda. Councilmember Hakamovic, you can take your hand down, I think, unless you have another comment. No, okay, thank you.
Just keeping track of it all.
All right, thank you. Now we're on to Section 3.1, and this is an opportunity for our residents to have any level of public comment that they wish to have. We have no public hearing scheduled tonight, so it's basically open, open mic, again, being courteous with comments and keeping your timeframe ideally around three minutes. If you can raise your hand function underneath the little smiley face hand reactions on the upper part of your screen. If you can't find it, doesn't work, come off mute and get our attention. I'll give you a moment in case any of our residents wish to speak tonight. All right, we have strong observers. So very fine. All right. I will now go ahead and close Section 3, and we will continue to move on. We have no formal presentation in 4, however, there's that one that we talked about in 5.2. Now, before we go to 5, we had asked to go for motions for consideration, so we're jumping over to 10.1. So 10.1 is on consideration of this motion to approve the minutes of May 25. That was the Special City Council Meeting Minutes, and it was identified that we had failed to put that on our June meeting, no, our, yes, the June 2021 meeting for approval. And so we wanted to circle back and to officially make sure that those minutes were acknowledged and approved. And I acknowledge that Councilmember Hakamovic was not present for those, so he would most likely abstain from voting. May I have a motion?
So move, Kim.
Is there a second?
Second, Jones.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I was trying to recuse myself.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Great. And we did have some discussions internally with just sort of how we might be able to make sure that we're tracking agendas and minutes and postings and such, because we are having a lot more meetings these days and probably a lot more based on the work coming up at hand. And just wanted to make sure that we have a process so that we can try not to miss these in the future. So thank you. 10.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Just a really quick question. When are minutes available? Because it's like we're going to be approving minutes from meetings that I can barely remember in a little bit. And I'm not sure, and looking at the minutes, Friday night at 8:00 PM is somewhat suboptimal. So I'm not sure when minutes are available for review because it might be better feedback if they're out sooner.
Courtney, do you have a response?
So typically, they are finalized before the next council meeting, but if there is interest for them to be prepared earlier, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. 10.2, this is a consideration of a motion to approve Ordinance 982. It has elements of the new changes to the Open Public Meetings Act, proclamation from the governor, and the fact that we need to bring our own title to, up to compliance with that. Mr. Tom Brubaker, I might ask if you feel any quick need. I will assume that they've read the memo and the ordinance, if there's anything you wish to reinforce, and then we can open it up.
I'm just available to answer questions. The ordinance just confirms the council's ability under the new law to hold virtual meetings.
Yeah. So is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. And a second from Bruce Jones. Thank you. Now, any discussion? Good. Tom made good sense with his memos then. All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Great, thank you very much. And then we have a new 10.3, Councilmember Hakamovic, you have a couple of ideas around proclamations, I believe.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a National Police Week and Police Officers Memorial Day proclamation in the form authorized and signed by the mayor of Medina, Washington. Thank you, Tom.
That sounded official. Okay, so he's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And then now discussion.
I'm not sure if folks had a chance to look at what I forwarded not that long ago this evening from Medina. It seems that this is a significant week for law enforcement. Our police chief told me that he'll be participating, I understand, in the candlelight vigil for officers who have fallen in the line of duty. That is part of this week. It seems like a straightforward demonstration of respect to them to move forward with this proclamation. Thank you.
And my only commentary, of course, I have no concerns about that. I, on an upcoming agenda here, there's a agenda topic which I know we carried over from the study session because we didn't have enough time for that discussion. But I am very interested in getting input about what the city wants to do as far as setting standards around proclamations. And as you know, there is a lot that could be done almost on a daily basis. Professional associations, organizations, obviously, programs, and, you know, such as the law enforcement. I even believe in a week or two, there might even be a Public Works Week. That might be something we want to consider as well, as we're on the topic. But I also get an awful lot of would you consider supporting or signing on with this proclamation and that proclamation? When I was oriented into this role, the general communication to me was that, boy, once you start, you're not going to be able to stop. There's this, you know, how do you make the choices? And I believe in organizations, they make their choices based on what they list as their values and making sure that everything's in alignment with that. And so I think it just might be an interesting topic in the future so that we have guidance as far as what, when they all come in in different ways, written, email, or otherwise, we know whether this is something we want to formally approve or not. So I mentioned that as a discussion at every point. Okay, any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously, and I'll look for the guidance with that. Okay, thank you very much. That takes care of Section 10. Let's go ahead and head back down to Section 5, and we have 5.1. Let me get my paperwork in front of me. Okay, here we go. And I think John Greenwood's going to help with this. You had several memos with that. We wanted to make sure that the, that we have a proposal and a game plan in order to how to tackle the next set of works that we want to do. So I don't know, Dean or John, which one wanted to kind of set the stage and then we'll get the discussion going. Go ahead.
John, you're going to share that presentation?
One moment.
So I just, I wanted to kind of kick things off with the fact that tonight we're discussing the next couple of years worth of general planning activities. Council's had significant interest in making changes, and staff believes we are finally in a place to try and help you make things happen. So some general goals out of tonight, we want to kick off the 2024 to 34 Comprehensive Plan process. Just in so doing here, we want to point out that Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.3 are interrelated and that, and that as such, we're going to have three parallel planning work process that are going to be ongoing simultaneously. First is the comp plan, where we're going to evaluate the existing conditions, be getting as much public participation and feedback. We're going to get that in 5.2. And the second is updates to our land use code. There's been a lot of talk about that. So Title 17 updates, we've already started on that. There's the five items that Planning Commission worked on last week, and that's going to come to you in 5.3, as well as some new legislation and such as permanent supportive housing. The third element of the of the parallel process is the miscellaneous planning functions, and that's where we have our development agreements and quasi judicial type items. So again, 5.1 and 5.2 tonight are going to kick off the comp plan, and then 5.3 is going to bring the Planning Commission's Title 17 work back to you for review and hopefully approval. And as such, you're going to get three questions that we're looking to get guidance from you tonight on. One, to establish the Council Land Use Committee to work with staff on the process. I believe we had Councilmembers Moore and Muramoto who had interest in doing that previously. And we're looking to get buy off on the Public Participation Plan as recommended, and then to also hopefully approve the five sections of Title 17 that is recommended by the Planning Commission. So with that, just wanted to give you kind of an overview thing because there are three different sections in here that, that speak to our plans moving forward. So with that, turning it over to John to bring all of our guests and council up to date with where we are and lead us through our three agenda items.
Listen, Mayor, if I could ask if someone does raise their hand to interrupt me, I'm not able to see that. I will yield to the question, but.
I can see. I'll keep an eye out.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Starting off with an overview of how we got here, for those of you who were not there at the time, in Q4 2021, we did some planning. In Q1, Q2 2022, we're going to come to you and discuss what has happened during that time. And then in Q2 2022, we're going to talk about where we are now. And then moving forward to all the way through December of 2024, what is next? So Q4 2021, what did we plan? What we planned on was a comprehensive plan update, and this number has been a moving number during the past year or so. But right now, I believe we are at a 10-year state mandated process. This is not an annual update process. This is the large one that is required under the Growth Management Act. We had identified five chapters and had, with the assistance of the city attorney, drafted changes to those chapters. Those were pools, parking, schools, government, and zoning maps. And those were brought before you, and those were approved for moving forward to the Planning Commission. And then, of course, there was the subsequent Land Use Code Chapter Review and Update. Those were prioritized in Q4 2021 into groups by the city council. Now, during the past three, four, some odd months in Q1, Q2, what has happened? We've got a new council member, position number five, Councilmember Hakamovic. We have a new planning consultant selected that happened in March. That is the Blue Line Group, which is currently represented by Mr. Eric Jensen this evening. And we now have a new city attorney selected in April. That is Attorney Brubaker. And then, of course, that brings us to where we are now, and this is Comprehensive Plan is now underway. You will see in the packet that there is some high-level scoping work attached for your review. There is scheduling work that has been completed. That is a Gantt chart that you will see come up in every city council meeting to make sure you know where the process, where in the process we are at, and the budget development that aligns with the contract that was approved back in March. And the first deliverable you're going to see under number, item number 5.2 this evening is the Public Participation Plan, and we are seeking feedback on that. And also, the five land use code chapters now underway that have gone through a public hearing last month, recommendations were received from the Planning Commission. Additional definitions during that meeting were identified for inclusion. It wasn't until after the fact, unfortunately, that we realized that definitions are included under Chapter 17.04, so we will be including those three definitions when we get to updating Chapter 17.04. And putting these five chapters in a parking lot until other chapters are ready to move forward to what will eventually be CEPA determination and Washington State Department of Commerce review before coming back to the city council for final adoption. And now we get to the subsequent Land Use Code Chapter and Review and Update. The new consultants, in this case, both Blue Line Group and Attorney Brubaker now being on board, the Comprehensive Plan being underway, the five land use code chapters having passed through the Planning Commission, we are now ready to start additional land use code work. And what happens next? January 2022, we had Councilmembers Moore and Muramoto desire to form a committee to work on land use code. City was not yet ready to begin that work. However, now it is ready to begin that work. And what we're seeking now tonight under this item 5.1, two things. Recommend confirmation of Councilmembers Moore and Muramoto on a land use committee, and recommend that the committee meet with staff to discuss next steps, returning in June to report out to full council. At this point in time, leaving this topic open for discussion.
Great. So council, what are you thinking at this point here? Again, we had the green highlighted items. There were seven of them, and there is a new legislative that passed in '21. So there's probably eight items and seeing about forming that task force, that committee, and sitting down with staff and attorney and Blue Line Group and taking a pass through it to kind of get a feel for what we would eventually come back to the full council for. So that's the discussion. Councilmember Hakamovic.
Is there, there is a plan discussed at the end of 2021 and then going into 2022 for a sequence of Title 17 reviews? Is that unchanged? Or is that on your discussion again?
Those are the green, the green highlighted seven. Yes.
Right, whatever. So it's still that sequence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, hi. I'm no longer interested in serving on this committee, so I would ask that somebody else volunteer.
Certainly. Let me just check with the others before I circle back around here. Councilmembers Friedman or Jones or Muramoto, any thoughts, comments?
Still happy to join. I'm still happy to serve, but I would like to not be a committee of one, so.
I appreciate that. Councilmember Friedman, you were going to say?
Yeah, I'm sorry. IT continues to stumble me tonight. As, you know, in connection with this group of seven, call it eight, with the other item, I understand. We were going to march our way through updates on that. The question is, is it the opinion of staff that forming this committee and having them handle, working with staff to come, to eventually come back to council with input that we can use to align ourselves between staff and council that we pass on to the Planning Commission? Is this a more efficient manner? Will this speed up the process of going through these items? Is it, is it assumed that is, is it intended to do that? Does it change your timeline a little bit and prove it? That's it.
I think it's a great question. We can answer that. Let's go ahead and make sure Bruce and then circle back around and see. Councilmember Hakamovic has a hand up. Councilmember Jones, you okay?
I'm okay, but I'm, I don't have the bandwidth to participate on that.
That's right. I understand. Okay, thank you. All righty, Councilmember Hakamovic.
I'd be very happy to serve with Councilmember Muramoto on this, if it's possible. I want to pile on to Councilmember Friedman's question here. The, my understanding of the process is that staff, consulting group, city attorney would go through and prepare some title, some subpart of Title 17, to prepare it. And the recommendation now is instead of sending that to the full council, after all that work is done, to send that to the committee en route to the council? Or is there a separate, I'm trying to understand that that's specific. I think Councilmember Friedman, that's part of your question. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Sounds good. And, and actually, if I might speak, and then Dean, you can, Dean R., you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was our understanding that you really did want to have maybe advanced work and input at that level before it then came back to everybody at that council meeting to then formulate.
I'm just trying to clarify, I'm just trying to clarify process, not intent.
So we were honoring that request is what we're identifying here. Yeah. Otherwise, Dean R., if we did not do the task force and we just did, if you will, the normal process, does that speed it up and does that still give them the capacity and capability to get into the details of what they may wish to, to give input on?
So I guess I'm going to try and ask, answer Steve's question if I can. I can't promise that it will speed up the process, but what I was, what I think we were looking to try and do was to build a bridge and to try and be working together on this and to be able to get council perspective on, on how we were moving forward. We have some thoughts. You know, the, the seven items we had weren't prioritized, for instance. They were a list of seven, and like I said, we have an eighth. And so it felt like having at least two council members on board to kind of walk through from a council perspective on how to proceed with this and communicate, get a couple of resident experts on board and try and bring this forward in that fashion that seemed to be the method that council's been preferring to work right now.
Makes sense.
I'm sorry, since I, the last question, just want to clarify. I hear that. I just want to make sure you understand. Blue Line Attorney staff will prepare 17 dot some number, take the document with revision marks and some guidance, and then pass it to the subcommittee that will then go and work on it. And then it goes to the council, or is there some other work on it, and then it goes to the council, or is there some other workflow here? I just want to understand the proposed workflow.
At some point, but that's not all going to be done before the first time we meet. We thought we would get together and look to try and, you know, prioritize the work and see how it all works in relation to the comp plan. And, and that sort of thing, whether we're willing certain items, for instance. If council wants to take a really deep dive onto a certain item, then it may mean that we have to work on it twice, once, once now and then once after the comp plan's been, been completed. So just trying to get some guidance and be on the same page for moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you.
In, in the long run, yes, there will be red line things coming to council and that sort of thing. That's not going to be by June or something like that. Okay.
And Councilmember Muramoto.
So I think this discussion was like sometime in the summer into autumn, so. Short term loss of long term memory, sorry. My, what, what I thought we were doing was the, the first four or five chapter seventeen, title seventeen chapters were kind of a little bit of low hanging fruit. I thought the intent was to try to help prioritize the titles that the planning commission would look at. I have no intention at all of saying, of, of talking about fixes or anything like that. That is really my understanding. I mean, that's really what the planning commission is all about. I think my, my goal was to help prioritize those chapters that were high priorities that should be addressed next, given that we were going to do this in kind of a staged fashion. So correctly if I'm wrong, but this was more of a prioritization effort as opposed to trying to fix anything. Now, if, if, if it is not the intent of the council to go that way, then I don't see a need for the planning, for this, for this subcommittee. Again, it was really just to prioritize meet, and I'm happy to meet with Blue Line and staff and say, this is kind of my idea and, and making sure that maybe we talk about some of the really hard stuff. And maybe we intermix it with some really easy red line stuff. But I, that, that was my intent is to help the process flow quicker so we can get some, some additional quick fixes, but also interspersed with maybe some stuff that's really hard that we can start working on and then pass that on and say, planning commission, this is what we want to work on next. And then maybe in subsequent, you know, after that chunk is done to go and say, okay, this is the next thing that's high priority and maybe some medium fixes or low hanging fruit. That was my intention and I, and I don't know. That's when I first spoke up. That's what I thought we were gonna do and Scott, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, but I, I thought that was kind of the intent of the subcommittee and no more, no less.
That has to be done, and I know that that, if you read the memo, that is really what they're hoping for because again, we have seven and then plus this new legislative and it's like, okay, where do we start? Help give some priorities and help get some directions and, and we can define it better how it would look. So I, I think it's gonna be that and then deciding if you need more of a, of a of a pre, pre-strike team looking at it or not and just let, you know, okay.
It was about priorities. It wasn't about verbiage. It wasn't about correcting text. It was really just about priorities.
Okay.
Yep, in my mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedman.
Well, I, I think that there's more to it than I think Kim is saying at this point. I understand we, the planning commission comes up with, maybe with the eventual verbiage. And I also think, and I also understand that we need public input in order to make, to allow them to make sensible decisions on. The, the issue to me though is is what, is what is it we're telling the planning commission to work on? Because if we don't tell them effectively what problem we think they're trying to solve and give them some direction on how to proceed in that area, then we, then we have the potential for a bad, you know, a bad code that doesn't fit with the council is thinking, and that's the issue I've been arguing for months. So priority, yes. But after that, it's, it's what's the priorities of those priorities? So.
Yeah, and it may be that some are, as Councilmember Muramoto said, lower hanging fruit and can go faster. And some are like, we want, we need a strike force team first taking a peek at it. And then it's all set to go before council. It may change based on the, the topic. Anyways, my thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
And by the way, just, I, just to add. Dean's there. I'm not here to go run another election. I don't like to run against people anyway when I have elections. I've been successful so far. I'm happy to serve on the committee as well if, if that's a need to do so, so. No problem. I'm, I'm also happy to have Dean do it, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I, you've expressed what I thought too, that one, the group was going to help prioritize. And secondly, they were going to help work with the planning commission so that what comes back to the council has a good chance of being approved and not being material that's just going to have to be recycled again. So you expressed it there. Well, so that was my point too.
It's good to clarify. Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I have the same perception as Bruce and Steve and in terms of, of my slot, I would, I would nominate Councilmember Hakamovic. But I think Councilmember Friedman would be good too, so I guess we should put it to a vote.
I don't want to do that. I'll step aside.
We have three, three of you on, Dean, Kim and Steve. So Councilmember Muramoto, are you wanting to remain in? Yes?
You'd be good. I'll step aside. We can let Dean do it. That's fine.
Okay.
Dean's the one who seems to have more time than anybody right now.
Your, your mic's off.
Watch out. Okay. Any objection then for Councilmembers Muramoto and Hakamovic to do the work? You're on mute, Dean R.
It was Friedman and Hakamovic, right?
No, I think Councilmember Friedman stepped aside. He withdrew.
Oh, okay. I thought Kim said he didn't want to do it. Sorry.
No, no, no. Yeah.
Oh, he'd be great.
They renegotiated. Okay, thank you.
I was totally kidding. I was totally kidding.
Nice to see you. Okay, thank you so much for that decision. John, bringing it back to you, keeping us on track here with our timing.
Yes, now moving, was gonna ask Mayor, that's, those are the two asks that we had of item number five point one, so we are ready to move on.
We're ready to go on to five point two, which is our PPP, Public Participation Plan.
Yes, and I will first stop and say that the Public Participation Plan is the first deliverable of the comprehensive plan. This draft document is already gone in front of the planning commission for feedback and has received some additional staff feedback. It is coming in front of you to receive ideally high level input with the understanding that this is a living document that may require change during the next twenty four to thirty months. And I'm going to stop short there and introduce Eric Jensen from the Blue Line Group to provide a presentation of the sixteen, eighteen page document you have in front of you.
Thanks, John. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with you all. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and then I will pop off as I read my script so you don't have to look at my left ear looking at a different screen reading my script. One second here. Okay, can everybody see that acceptably?
Yep.
Okay, great. So if while I'm going through my script, I do not move to the next slide, please remind me. Thank you. So I am here as the Director of Planning for Blue Line. It's our pleasure to provide the city with all means of planning consultancy, including conference plan update of which a critical aspect of this effort is indeed engaging the public to support you folks at the city to look towards the right approach for your growth and your planning and community development into the future. So I will go ahead and get us started here. So the city has begun the two year process of receiving public input on the updating of the comprehensive plan. Towards that end, the first deliverable with the respect to the comprehensive plan is this Public Participation Plan. Public engagement is a bedrock of the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic update because the plan is by nature a guiding policy document meant to bring the community's goals to fruition. The Public Participation Plan creates a framework for both outreach and engagement. While these two terms are often used in tandem, they do have different meanings. Outreach is mainly a one-way communication to generate attention around the plan update. This will embody public noticing, project announcements and surveying. Engagement is a two-way conversation used to gather feedback from all people and groups in the community. This will consist of in-person and virtual meetings, interviews, pop-up events and workshops. As you'll know, my script will not necessarily be limited what you see on the screen. It'll be enhanced for that. Just to let you know, in case you're wondering why all that great wording I am coming up with is beyond this slide. Community engagement is the right thing, the smart thing and a legal requirement through the Growth Management Act. Early and continuous public outreach should foster trust and a sense of community ownership in the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic update. By engaging the community, we can receive multiple perspectives on different top, different topics and build consensus and support for community-led decision-making. It is important that at the public engagement process does offer awareness around the purpose and importance of the project. Public participation is essential to strengthening decision-making at the local government level. The community is the most important stakeholder in the future of the city. And it is very important that residents and property owners have a voice in guiding the comprehensive plan update. We cannot expect everyone to have the time or desire to participate in the comprehensive plan update. But our goal is to actively seek out and engage community groups and populations to ensure input is representative of Clyde Hill's cultural and demographic diversity. To do this, this Public Participation Plan specifies a variety of outreach and engagement methods to provide opportunities for input from as many voices as possible. The International Association of Public Participation has identified five levels of public participation which are shown in this illustration. The purpose is to find the most appropriate level of engagement to fit the needs of the community depending on the project goals, timeframes, resources and priorities. For example, if you are working on a project that is very straightforward, trying to collaborate where there is little passion or complexity would be a waste of time. Instead, the consult level would be more appropriate. Ultimately, this diagram serves as a guide to approach public engagement and will be used throughout the participation process. The Public Participation Plan outlines general timeframes for events as the project evolves. Initially, public participation will provide the public with information regarding the purpose of the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic update and assist them in understanding problems, alternatives, opportunities and or solutions. The primary goal is to honor the community's time and resources while engaging as many audiences as possible. As identified in the Public Participation Plan, project information announcements will come from the project page on the city's websites, mailers to residents, social media announcements and the city's bi-monthly newsletter. Next, the project team will consult with various audiences in the community to obtain public feedback through pop-up pop-up events and community surveys. The early community visioning exercise will direct the development of the vision statement for the comprehensive plan. A vision statement is important because it reflects the values and priorities for how the community wishes to grow and develop into the next twenty years. In fact, this will be the first community vision statement for the city of Clyde Hill's comprehensive plan in history. The desired outcome is to develop a unified vision for the future of Clyde Hill in the coming years and beyond. The community will be further involved through a community survey, focus group interviews or stakeholder interviews and a community workshop. Moreover, further opportunities for public participation and input include planning commission and city council, public meetings, public hearings and comment periods and community events such as Clyde Hill Community Celebration Day. Next, we will take a look at the overall tentative project schedule. It is important to evaluate the success of public engagement over the course of the project for a variety of reasons. Firstly, we want to make sure that the efforts are an effective use of time for both the project team and the general public. Second, as engagement proceeds, we will learn a lot from the community that can improve how we conduct public outreach at future opportunities or if the Public Participation Plan has any shortcomings. Finally, ongoing evaluation will determine the diversity of participating individuals or groups and whether additional efforts to reach underrepresented groups or populations is needed to ensure input is representative of Clyde Hill's cultural and demographic diversity. Transparency around the valuation of public involvement is important to build trust and partnership with the community. A full evaluation of public engagement also allows the community to draw clear connections between public, feedback and planning outcomes. This diagram shows a high level progression for the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update. We are currently in the analysis of visioning phases, phase, which will continue through the end of this year. Once a public participation plan is approved, it will be implemented and our efforts will be, will commence with early visioning exercise. Next year, our team will work on drafting the updates to the comprehensive plan's element chapters alongside the public. Finally, in twenty twenty four, the periodic update will be ready for adoption and certification. The Public Participation Plan is intended to be a living document that can be amended to meet the needs of the community as the project progresses. If or when the need arises to revise the PPP, the set revisions will come before the city council and if possible, the planning commission. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. And I know there's two PowerPoints in there. You gave the shorter version and then the longer one has a little bit more detail, although I know we're still kind of in the upper echelon here in the review. So we're looking for your thoughts. Hopefully you've had a chance to review all of that. And if, if this looks like a decent PPP, good, bad, otherwise add this, more this, less that. This is where we need to get your feedback and then hopefully your, you know, approval blessing so that we can continue on in our game plan. That being said, Councilmember Hakamovic.
Clarify, first, great presentation, makes sense, consistent with a, with a document. During your slides and also the document, you mentioned a bi-monthly city newsletter. I'm not sure if that's a different additional newsletter or if that's the Clyde Hill Views Quarterly thing that the city already puts out. It's the quarterly one. Okay, great. I wasn't, I heard bi-monthly and I wasn't sure. Can you give us an example of how the, how, out of the previous comprehensive plan guided the city's actions in terms of how the city did do something or didn't do something as a result of the comprehensive plan?
I cannot yet. We are just undertaking that evaluation of the previous plan.
Okay. And then last question, you, you, you mentioned actively seeking out and engaging community groups and populations that are historically underrepresented in traditional planning processes. Can you give an example? Because I was just trying to understand who that might refer to.
That is a traditional approach based on public participation processes. We'll be reaching out to yourselves, planning commission, city staff to try and identify those, those that are earmarked under that definition. If indeed we find that there is a little less diversity, a little more homogeneity in the populace, then we will respond accordingly. But that is the information we will collect from all facets of the city governance so we can try and pursue further.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Muramoto.
Sorry, just a question about, I'm trying to put something like physical to this. Can you give me some examples of maybe how you in the past have done public outreach? I mean, you go knock on doors, do you do newsletters, do you do public forums? You know, I imagine a truck with a big speaker running through Clyde Hill going, hey, give us your, you know. I, you know, I mean, it's a dilemma, right? Because our community tends to be, I would say, kind of isolated. I'm just looking for some examples of how in the past you've done public outreach. Thanks.
You bet. The more traditional outreach methods have been in-person meetings, starting with stakeholders. Meeting more with organization and interested groups, those that have a little more understanding of operations and issues. And then we go from there to the general public for open houses. If it's design-oriented or physically capital improvement-oriented, there might be charades where we start looking at aesthetic issues. But in this case, we're talking about concepts, goals, and policies. Those are the traditional approaches, those are in-person meetings. However, during the course of COVID, we've established more online surveys where we do reach out to folks to gather their input. We've also found a lot of success in going to events that are city-sponsored, putting up a booth, putting up a table, putting up flyers, things like that. And really, really just being there to have a lot of back and forth with folks or even solicit their written opinion if they can fill something out and hand it to us. And it just depends on the community and where they see the greater need for reaching out, whether or not. Door-to-door is necessary. That's, that's one of the least useful measures simply because you have to, you have to time it. You got, you've got trespassing issues or concerns, securities and safety. But so those are combinations. And then nowadays, we have social media. And then as we just talked about, we have newsletters or other city website pages that we can utilize.
Great. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I guess this is to Eric. Can, and maybe I missed something here. Can you tell me what is envisioned in analysis, envisioning? What are we doing there? What are we going to end up with when we're done with that piece?
So the vision statement is a singular statement. It's not unlike a company that has a mission statement, although a vision statement looks to the future. It looks toward the ideal environment. It looks toward the aspirations of the community in terms of. How they want to see the community as a result of the planning efforts they do now, how they look down in the 10-year, 20-year, 40-year period. In this case, we're doing a 20, we're doing a periodic update for a 20-year horizon. And so the vision statement is a singular statement about what the city aspires to look like and be and feel and accomplish. And so doing a visioning exercise to establish a vision statement is a great kickoff toward the public participation effort. People get kind of jazzed up about that. They think, hey, this is a, this is a good entryway into kind of getting involved. We want to see Clyde Hill be more, you know, be more conscientious of our great urban forestry. Or we want to, we want to maybe encourage, you know, more public events. We want to encourage this. We want to encourage that. So that's, that's the benefit of the vision statement.
So, okay, sounds, I agree. I understand. I like, I appreciate what that is. Why does it take eight months to do that? What analysis are we doing?
It, it doesn't. In terms of, in terms of a, in terms of scheduling. There is the effort to draft the components of the vision. There is the effort to reach out to folks at the city level, with staff, commission, and council. And then put together a vision exercise that reaches out to the public, collects that information, summarizes that down. Drafts a concise statement based on that information, presents it, goes to review. Doesn't take eight months, but it's part of the overall public outreach process within the public participation plan. So.
So that's, so I guess what you're telling me, that's the first part of the public outreach and the public participation we're asking for.
Right.
Once we get into January to August, then we're into it, into the more details of the plan.
Right. And you'll often see public outreach efforts overlap. Just because we're kind of getting into a vision statement doesn't mean we can't start reaching out to stakeholders. On really breaking down the benefits and the, and the shortcomings of the previous comprehensive plan. What does, what do people want to start presenting to the city and the consultants ourselves? About what they'd like to see in the next plan and how, how the previous plan affected them or didn't affect them. And that could be the problem. It's, it needs to be an effective document rather than on the shelf and growing dust.
So, okay, so then how does, when you're drafting the plan and part, public participation, how does that vary from? Not only the, the visioning piece, but the other part when you start into public hearings? Aren't we overlapping ourselves on all these pieces?
Well, as I mentioned, public participation starts now and it ends when you adopt the comprehensive plan. Because the public outreach is set, the overarching umbrella of all public interaction regarding the comprehensive plan. It can include the public hearing at the end with adoption and public comments saying like, well, I know you're at the final stages of this, but. Please consider this, or there seems to be some inconsistencies there. So public participation, it includes all interactions. The, the public participation outreach exercises that people think about when they think of outreach or public participation. Those are the open house meetings, those are the, those are the stakeholder meetings, online surveys. But they, but they forget that there are still ongoing and continuous public outreach opportunities. Through participating in public meetings and public reviews, planning commission meetings. You can go to a public comment period, a planning commission and say, hey, you know, I just want to get this off my chest about the comp plan. And here's my, here are my thoughts. That, that's always an element available to, to all.
All right, well.
All ready? Let me see here. I'll trust that councilmembers Jones and Moore will put their hands up if they want to make a comment. I'm going to circle back. I'm mindful of our time because we're now over our allotment. So councilmember Hakamovich.
I want to, while we're here talking about public participation, we haven't seen a budget amendment from the administration yet. And I'm looking back at 5.1 at the comp plan budget and looking at public participation. Love public participation. This sounds brilliant. As budgeted, it's about $30,000. I'm sure we could spend $60,000. We might be able to spend less. We obviously want to do a great job listening to the public. I'm not sure how to think about the value engineering of whether this is the right amount or whether this is overkill. Or whether this is inadequate, or how we judge this, especially as we anticipate. A budget amendment to handle all these costs. And I'm not sure how to think about that.
Good, good point. Well taken and noted. My only other comment, Eric, is we do have very strong HOAs in our community. And I know that they do get together and there's even block parties that may not be formal HOAs. But I know that they're always contacting, especially City Hall and the police department. If somebody wanted to pop by and just represent. So those might be other forums to maybe build in to the PPP. Because I think that would be direct access to nice subdivisions of people. Okay, one final comment, Dean.
Yeah, just really quickly on the budget end of things. We're just waiting to get some of the revenue monies that would be coming associated probably this summer. Related to money coming from the state for comp plan. And potentially, we even talked about trying to apply for another grant that would have to do with updating our urban forestry guide and a few other things like that. So we're just trying to get all of our budget items together at one time to hopefully only do one this year.
Okay. Thank you. Any final burning comment? Because what I'd like to just kind of have from you, if you will, is a thumbs up. We don't really need an official motion unless Tom corrects me otherwise. But we just need to know if this PPP is looking, sounding okay and continue on. Again, it's a dynamic document, so things can change. If you have a brilliant idea, bring it up and we'll just keep evolving. Anybody have a problem with that? Seeing nods and thumbs up. Okay, thank you. That sounds very good. Eric, thank you very, very much. I know we'll continue to work closely together. Wonderful. And then John, 5.3, I think you were just given a status report. Think we sort of alluded to it. What else do we need to say on 5.3?
Really nothing that hasn't already been said so far. Want to be respectful of the council's time. The five chapters went, they came back, there were some changes. The only substantive changes were the additions of three definitions that are needed under 17.04 that we're going to handle later. But for right now, we are looking for a similar thumbs up from council to take these five chapters. Put them aside and wait for additional land use code chapters to be done before moving forward with CBA determination and commerce review.
Council, does that sound like a plan?
That sounds great. One quick question from watching the planning commission go through these chapters. It was particularly interesting on pools, the, the point about safety. Water safety with whoever coming, coming by the water. My question was, is there a comparable? Safety issue for water features separate from pools and spas that will come up at some other point in the land use code? I ask because I'm unfortunately familiar with land, with water features that have been life safety hazards for small ones. And I just wasn't sure if that's to come or if water features need to be covered in this chapter.
Good question. Do you know off the top of your head, John, or do you need to get back?
Off the top of my head, I would have to defer to the building official, Rich Soloski. But simply by bringing it up here makes it go on my list.
Thank you.
Rich, do you have any comment?
Usually we look at, you know, what the water feature is. I think off the top of my head, I think it was like less than 18 inches of water. We just treated it, you know, as like a water feature. If it was deeper, then we kind of treated it as a pool. Or, you know, a water, you know, something like that. So then we, you know, did all the safety features with that.
Okay. So John, why don't you take that back and just take a peek? If not anything, maybe there's a portion around definitions to be mindful of.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great. Okay, so the next steps on this, unless council is, has anything else is, as, as we suggested, we're going to, we have this going. Nothing substantive, as we said, and then we're going to put it in queue, see if there's anything else to add. And then it goes through all that next level work. Any objections to that game plan? All right, people are nodding and thumbs up. Okay, then, good job, everybody. We have 5, 1, 2, and 3 all kind of interlinked and aligned on our comp plan and we're up and busy and going. Perfect. Thank you so much. 5.4, we need some input. And I think Sean, you were going to help with this. So go ahead and we had the memo there, but we need to have at least some direction or ideas so that you can take it to the meeting tomorrow.
Exactly. Yeah. Good after, good evening, mayor and council and members of the public. I'm wondering if somebody else can maybe share this piece. I don't see it coming up in my. Somebody else pull up that, John or Courtney, maybe pull up the memo and roll through the slide.
John, do you have that?
Well, in any case, yeah. It is in the packet. So ultimately, what, what we did here was we worked on, one, considering some of the options for that piece of property. Thank you, Dean. Looked at some of the options for the piece of property that we discussed. So that first image in here was just sort of an initial footprint, sort of give us a gauge of what the property looks like size-wise, some of the existing features. And then importantly, and you know, for a consideration of ours is how much impervious surface are we talking about? And what kind of area are we looking at? So it was a quick takeoff on, on quantifying some of those existing impervious surfaces, some of the trees and other things. And then just acted as a good, good starting point. So if you keep rolling on, we went through a variety of options and a variety of things that we discussed there. Generally, what staff had kind of coalesced around was maintaining it for a municipal purpose. More so along the lines of a facility expansion or maybe a parking lot or other usable space for, you know, municipal purposes. Rather than recreational or, you know, park type uses. So something we ran through was just a brief, you know, fit, fit or no fit on some of these things. And I used some of the scaling from the fire station and then applied it over to this site. Just give an idea of some of the range of options that are available as far as what we could make with parking. So there, this one, it was a head-in scenario. It maintained some of the existing trees that are all there. It utilized all of the existing impervious of the site right now. And if you keep rolling on. This other one also just is a minor variation, again, just playing with colors and stuff where we could maintain a little bit more surface, neck it down a little bit. Create breathing room for trees. Keep rolling, please. The next one was more, I think it was a 30-degree parking angle. So this actually had sort of a. Quick movement type. So this would be a back-end parking type scenario. So it's first move forward, pretty efficient for, for police vehicles and other response, response uses. And it maximizes sort of the footprint. So there's actually some area on the drive aisle along that five-foot east, east property line. Where, where you could park other, other equipment or other trucks or other vehicles for temporary purposes. So. And then if you keep rolling on. This is just more, more variations and we'll keep going through. These are not really the preferred ones. But again, just kind of demonstrate some of the range of options we looked at. These are 45-degree parking scenarios. And then again, wanting to show you sort of the full things of, full range of consideration. You'll have to use your imagination a little bit because I know that this picture is, is scaled with a basketball court and a facility. But it is sort of meant as a placeholder. There's a little in the picture in the bottom, I think it says it's 30 by 60. I don't remember exactly what this one was. But it just gives you an idea for dimension. That could be a 30 by 60 swimming pool. It could be a 30 by 60 dog park. It could be a 30 by 60 sports court. But the point is, if you tried to fit it within the space, it does fit. There is room for it. This particular scenario showed maintenance of the existing impervious surface, so the existing paved areas to complement that. And again, one of the things we're looking at is not reducing the existing impervious. Because those are only getting more difficult to get back in the future. So say that we took all this out and made it grass and turf and beautiful pervious surfaces that absorb stormwater. I can only imagine in 10 years, 15 years, that would be more difficult for us to gain back should we choose to do so in a future development scenario. So if you roll a little further, same idea, but again, showing kind of what I was saying. If we did a full park conversion for the site and we wanted to just make it a beautiful green oasis and just leave it for, for forever and ever. We could do that as well. And this short sort of shows that. And then the last slide, again, is just a slightly larger, slightly larger court. I think it's 80 by something. Again, it's all in the key there on the bottom. So we just wanted to kind of present to you guys the full range of scenarios we looked at. Again, don't, don't get stuck on the fact that I am showing you basketball courts and lined courts rather than a dog park or a BMX track or something. But the, the point is the site can accommodate a range of, a range of uses. Our recommendation after going through all those uses was, was to maintain it for that municipal and that civic use. Understanding the potential of a future expansion of City Hall facility or our needs on that footprint. Some of the reasons we lean more towards that and not sort of like a playground or other use is kind of being between those two response facilities. Could be difficult for, for dogs and animals with loud noises or fast, or fast-moving vehicles. There's a little bit of conflict in creating pathways for children and schools moving to and from the street to the school. And again, mixing in animals or dogs or other things. Not saying any of those are ideal killers, but again, those are things that we thought about. So. With that, I guess, I think what we were looking more so for was just whether this meets what council's request was for a staff recommendation. And, and if you guys had any input about what we're looking at, what we missed, or if there's anything that you're particularly concerned about in moving forward. or if there's anything that you're particularly concerned about in moving forward.
So Sean, I think you just answered the question. I think Councilmember Friedman had brought it up last time. What is the need based on, you know, we have this land, what is the first request from city? And what I'm hearing is that the the parking, municipal parking is the need. And again, this is temporary space until we figure out what the bigger game plan is for all of that, and then things can change in the future. So we just need to know because going to the meeting tomorrow, they then would then put this into the churn, and there would be drawings and then part of the development agreement so that we can get going on the next steps. That being said, Councilmember Akamovich.
I want to point out, from what Sean said, the neighbors who live by the public works area and the tennis courts by the public school have pretty consistent complaints about hurried parents in the morning using that little strip as the secret backdoor drop off to avoid the big turnaround. And so a consideration is that this could be a very attractive, aha, I do not need to wait in this long line at drop off or pickup. And it's just another consideration. It's just the way you brought up, I wanted to make sure it was really clear that that's it's a very attractive space for hurried parents in that way.
Therefore, the gate might be necessary. Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Friedman.
Yeah, I I like it for the staff use. I like it particularly for the police department. And I think if you were to, I've made this case before, I just want to reemphasize that to me, this helps the police department serve the community quicker, more effectively, more efficiently. I can't it gives us some options for public works down the road to help them. And as addition, to me, it's good best for the community.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? If that's in mind, then that's what Sean is going to take then to the the meeting tomorrow unless I hear anything else from you saying no. All right, I'm seeing the nods and no one saying otherwise. All right, Sean, I think you have, you and Dean have what you need. Appreciate that.
We do. Thank you.
I know we'll hear more. Okay, thank you. And we're moving five. Oh, no, we didn't move five. Five, five, Sean. Think it's just a quick update as we promised them. I don't know if there's anything more to add other than what's in the memo.
Nope, unfortunately not. Survey has been collected. It's being whatever kind of magic they do in the computers where they load it all in, and they're developing base maps. So that's where we're at right now for both 17th and the Small Drainage Program in general. So nothing new.
Okay, thanks for keeping us up to date. 5.6 then is, again, we've had carryover items on study clubs, and I know in the last round we've had some discussion around budget and maybe budget calendaring. I know that Councilmembers Jones and Akamovich had some notes and some suggestions. I guess from my standpoint, we have lots of work, and you are all still working on the guidelines for your policies and such. And so didn't know if we just keep cranking away at it with the additional meeting each month, or if we want to and can, for those of us that are working during the day, if we could carve out a day and just sort of devote just some real long concentrated time on some of these topics in the form of of a retreat or a massive study session. So we wanted to just put that out there because we got to get to the next level of work done. Did I cue that up right, Dean? Or was there something more? And I think we were going to ask Councilmember Jones and Akamovich for their commentary.
Yeah, I think we have three interrelated items again, and so we kind of tried to put them all into this one agenda item. I guess from my thinking, I was gonna, I was thinking to have Councilmember Jones and Akamovich kind of present their budget notes, and then that would kind of probably lead us into some retreat and budget calendaring and budget advisory committee type discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Jones.
So I'm always a fan of using a retreat, which is really just a special study session when it makes sense. I it just seems to me we've got so many things underway to try to fit that in this year is a stretch, and that the things that we have talked about, perhaps being done here, could be elements maybe in a normal council meeting, but also in a study session and and fit in without adding yet another meeting. Some kind of backed off on that idea, certainly for this year. That's my feeling.
Sure. Go ahead, Councilmember Akamovich. Oh, I thought you had to hand up. Sorry.
There's a Ms. Harry Sauce.
So I'm hearing that we want to just keep the extra study session, primarily making sure the guidelines are continuing to be moved along, and if we can plug in another topic that we would do it that way versus taking it separate. That's what I'm hearing and seeing nods on. Okay, and Dean R., is there anything, any follow up question we need to ask on our end to plan? I think the next meeting we talked about was like on, what was it, May 24th or something like that? And I think that we'll ask city staff to put a doodle out just to kind of see the timing. Maybe if people could perhaps meet kind of in the late afternoon versus in the early evening, if people can secure that from those that are working, that might be, we'll throw those options on the doodle and we'll see what we can get. And that might be really helpful too, especially for the staff that come to support it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything more?
Well, so I was just thinking, so we have the budget calendar, a draft budget calendar in here, and that budget calendar has three. Well, I guess let me actually back up just a hair. So we typically use, utilize that budget advisory committee. That's been the tradition here at Clyde Hill. I'm assuming that we would like to continue that process. And so that's one question. And then the second question is kind of maybe we wanted to go over the budget calendar and knowing that this first calendar that we have, the first meeting is really not until August. So it was kind of, we throw one budget study session out the window if we had to retreat. And I know we already said no to the retreat, so I'm assuming then that that we need to have this third meeting. I'm just, my concern is not having it until August, and unfortunately, we're we're getting to a time of the year between deadlines and vacations and different things at the staff level that that's going to be really hard to try and have a good discussion on the priorities, which I believe was part of the topic of the two council members memo that was in here. So I can shut up and let you guys talk.
Well, I know, but I'm also hearing that if we feel like we can add priorities to a study session, timing, that we can certainly do that at any advanced time is what I'm, I thought I had understood. Because I'm with you, you know, we got to keep going. And we also identified as a team, we really wanted to look at those priorities and make sure that we identify what's going to drive us so we can make sure we're budgeting in that direction. Okay, on my list here, one, two, three, Councilmember Jones, you're number one.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure we didn't overlook that memo that you just described. And it identifies the thought that we would have a a prioritization or a issues discussion ahead of time before the August meeting, which you just described. And
Yep.
I think Councilmember Akamovich and I are hoping that we can maybe compress what we're doing even a little bit such that the July meeting would allow some of that to occur at that time.
Great.
Yep, I see hints, nodding, so great.
All righty, Councilmember Muramoto, you're next, don't mind.
Yeah, my only comment was, you know, the meetings, August, September, and then we seem to get rushed to November and we approve it. I would love to at least pencil in onto the calendar a July meeting, you know, and if we need to cancel it because we don't have anything to talk about, that's fine. But I think that the memo brings up some really interesting points, and if in the course of the next study session, we decide that we want to share more and get more participation from the community at large, that will give us an opportunity to do that. So I would love to see something penciled in for July. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Akamovich.
I wanted to circle back to the memo from Dean Rowland, Lisa King about the Budget Advisory Committee. First and foremost, absolutely, community involvement, good thing, very important, great tradition. The suggestion that Councilmember Jones and I had while we were discussing this was seeking feedback, even if it's super brief email, 15 minute phone call feedback from BAC alumni and council around what worked and what was a good use of time and what might not have been a great use of time to refine the BAC process. And I think I'm going to look to Councilmember Jones to make sure I'm getting this right. This is not a moment to reengineer and start from scratch, but we seem to be in a good position to have some refinements, given when we're having this conversation around what we cover and how we cover it in those sessions. Is that fair?
Yes.
All right. I think Councilmember Muramoto, your hand's still up unless you had another afterthought. Okay, no worries. Lisa King, does that give you enough to work from at this point?
Um, yeah, so what I think I'm hearing is that they want to have a special study session on the priorities in July. Was that correct? And then continue to have the schedule remain the three existing BAC meetings that are on the proposed calendar. Keep those in place as well.
And
and in the meantime, send out
Open up or solicit for more opportunity for
And send out a survey, probably a survey monkey since that's a tool we have to former BAC members that have participated on that committee in the past, which is no problem. We can get that out right away. But is that correct that I have the three existing BAC meetings as proposed plus one for July for priorities?
Yep, whenever we can get it in ahead of time. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And would you like me to send out a doodle for the July dates as well as the June dates? Okay, I got those down, so we'll send out doodles soon. And I know with vacation schedules, it's going to be tricky in the summer to get everybody on the same page, so we'll try to get those on the calendar as soon as possible.
That's a really good question. I'm sorry, I'm hearing feedback. I'll just forge it. Are we looking that if we, let's say we choose, we can't find a July date that all of the council members can attend? I'm just validating that it's all or nothing, or is it majority or nothing to keep the process going?
I think majority is fine.
Yeah, keep the process going.
Okay.
Majority.
That's helpful. Because I'm with you. We may have one person that drops off. And I guess if you're the person that gets dropped off and you feel very passionate about it, then let's just talk and we'll see what we can do. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Anything more on 5.6? I think we got that discussed. Oh, Dean?
Well, I was just going to throw out there, there is the option potentially to at least do some version of a hybrid moving forward like in June or some advanced date until work begins on City Hall. So thoughts on trying to do that? Or if we're happy going this route.
So the question on the table is to continue our monthly council meetings, Dean? That was your question? In the current hybrid, right? Yeah. Which I believe is what we had passed earlier, and I think that's our intent. The key on that is, as you point out, is that we may have to make allocations for public to show up at City Hall if they wish to have comment or observe the the virtual meeting or however we play it out. So we're going to have to iron ourselves out on that in the near future. That's upon us. Yeah. Does that answer your question, Dean?
Yes, partially. I guess what I was kind of looking for was input from council, and I guess we could doodle, make that a doodle as well, but just kind of see if people had interest in some or all of you coming back in person. We can still keep staff remote. I believe experimented with it enough, I think we can make it work.
All right, why don't we put a little survey out to the group? And under this circumstance, are you able to come back in? You prefer not? And wait another month or two? Yeah, let's survey. Because it may change based on what the scenario is. Yeah, thank you. That'll be important. Okay, 5.7, thank you for letting this remain. You saw, so this is the setup. We were all poised on the fourth for the Points Mayor meeting. And Beau Arts was hosting, and we're all getting on, and all of a sudden, we're seeing a whole bunch of, you know, Senator Patty Cooter was there, Representative Slater was there. Then we had all of these big top dog people within the Wash Dot system. And we had Directors of Legislation Relations, and we're like going, what the heck's going on? And it was a little bit of being blindsided, to be honest, but we worked past that. And what it was is that they being washed out, if you will, had found that when they went to get their monies for ongoing maintenance, they got $2.1 billion, but it apparently is $600 million shy of what they need overall to maintain everything that they're responsible for. And so what they were looking at is that the 520 landscape lids that are on 92nd and 84th and the Evergreen Point Road, that they're saying, well, according to an RCW, we need to turn those responsibilities for ongoing maintenance over to the cities. And by the way, we can, we have secured you basically $10,000 to $12,000 per acre per year, which each of those are roughly about two acres. So you can do the math. That's not a whole heck of a lot of money. And several years ago, I think four years ago, it was projected that then it would cost at least around $300,000 in total to maintain those lids. So you know where the gap is going to have to come out of is all of our non-existent budgets. And it was interesting to watch these individuals because obviously we are affluent neighborhoods, but we don't have revenue streams, right? We've talked about this in budget, and you know, where are we going to find $300,000 more or $100,000 if that's on our and on our costing? And it's like, hang on, this isn't fair. This isn't okay. And so what you saw in the packet was, this was originally brought up when they were doing the construction. I remember, Councilmember Moore, you might remember with me way back then, I remember raising the question when they were building those lids, who's going to be responsible for ongoing maintenance? And like, oh, don't worry about it. You know, it's down the road type of thing. Well, down the road is here. Mayor Joe Sabi at Hunts Point has had been point then, and he's willing to step forward and be point for the Points community. They had signed that interlocal agreement. You saw the old one. We would need to revise it and bring a new one, obviously, for new leadership. And he had utilized an attorney to help through that process and take on some of that, you know, work. And he was, last I checked, verifying that attorney was still available and willing to pick it up where they left off and take this on. They believe the interpretation around the RCW requiring the, this whole thing being paid by cities is erroneous interpretation. And so that would be the work at hand is to go right back to Wash Dot and say, hang on here. We got to have a discussion on that. And so basically, I think the bottom line here is I wanted to apprise you of this because this could have major impact on our city and on our budget planning process. And I don't know, Sean, if we would hire out to do it, if our own public works people have the capacity to do it. But you know, this would all have to be figured out if it even lands on our lap. But we wanted to let you know, since it's hot off the press, wanted to get your agreement that we're going to, we would go with the ILA updated and work with all the Points mayors to have further discussion. And the Senator and Representative were equally And the Senator and Representative were equally in of concern and willing to work with us as we marched down the next steps. So I hope I got that right, Dean. Did that make sense or did I miss any point? Good enough? Okay. So reactions or commentary? Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I was just going to say for the group, I definitely remember this coming up a couple of times a few years ago. And there's her two components of it. There's the landscape maintenance, you know, like mowing and watering, I suppose, probably part of it and all that kind of stuff. And then there's the signs, and the signs, I think, are the ones that, you know, if we're going to have to bite the bullet on this, I personally would say we should agree to do the maintenance part. But those signs get knocked down every now and then by somebody, you know, coming around the roundabouts, and you all see them down there. I think that would be a nightmare for us to take on, almost, you know, an open-ended, potentially large budgetary commitment. So from a negotiating standpoint, I mean, I would just dig in our heels on that aspect of it. Because those signs are really part of, you know, those lids and roundabouts are all part of essentially the 520. I mean, they're, they're all, you know, part of the overall state highway there, from my perspective. And I, you know, I don't know how much it would cost us to do the landscape maintenance, doesn't seem like that would be totally out of control. Might be a reasonable compromise.
Good point. Appreciate that. And you're absolutely right. It is all of that, the light poles, the signs, the water, rodent control, stormwater drainage, I mean, the list goes on. So you're absolutely right. Thank you. Let me see. Councilmember Hakamovic.
Thank you. Two questions. Is there an actual estimated cost for what the maintenance ongoing would be? I know what they're offering to help with, but one question is, do we know what the actual costs have been? The second question is, when members of the community find this news, do you want them reaching out to their elected representatives just yet or not just yet? I don't know what, what the rules are on lobbying and if this is lobbying, or if this is just people who live here expressing their unhappiness to their elected representatives.
I hear you. All I was told is back then, they had guesstimated $300,000, but I don't know if that was all inclusive of the items that Councilmember Moore had listed. That would certainly be something that would be reconfigured, and, and, and I'll let you know what they do. I'll find out from Mayor Sabi what would be the best approach to kind of lobby support one way or the other. We're just getting ourselves organized and, and you're right, I'm sure that, you know, if it's not well-maintained, it's, it's a direct reflection on our communities and, and even if the rodents aren't controlled, that could be a problem for our communities. So yeah, we'll, we'll need to kind of figure out how we can launch a communication campaign. Thank you. Councilmember Muramoto.
I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of happy that I wasn't at the meeting because I would be doing a tap dance on somebody's forehead here. You know, given the last budget cycle that we went through and the fact that the governor allocated, I think an extra half a billion dollars more than he was asked, looking at things that were funded within YRA, looking at things that were funded with, with ETP, $300,000 is not even a rounding error. I mean, this is sad. This is a really sad state of affairs that somebody would come in, and frankly, from their standpoint, nickel and dime, what to us is dollars more than dollars. I mean, this is almost insulting. I'm sorry. But if, I mean, if I need to go write a letter to Patty Cooter as a, as a citizen, I will do that. If I need to go scream and yell at Patty Cooter as a citizen, I will do that. I'm sorry, this is, this, this is like, I'm sorry, this is over the top. Sorry.
Thank you. Well, they did suggest we could seek additional funding such as from, you know, garden clubs and such, so.
Oh, okay. Why don't we just, I think somebody came up with a toll on 84th. Why don't we do that? I love that.
Now, that's not so far-fetched. I mean, Mayor, Mayor Sabi actually thought that there, there could be the, the restart of the toll on the 84th ramp. And we're not talking big bucks, but then once you recompute how much it would take on an ongoing basis, is that something for a peak timeframe that would be a revenue stream if we get stuck with it, if you will? So, yeah, they're, they're starting to think how we're going to do this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see, Dean Rilla.
So there was, that was one of the items that was thrown out there. The social experiment of doing nothing at all was also thrown out there. Just let it grow.
Yeah, then they're going to hear from everybody.
Yeah, I suspect we'll hear from a lot of people then, but that just, there were all kinds of ideas thrown out there.
Yeah. So, Council, are you okay with the game plan then? Will get me to, Tom, I don't know if, do I need an official motion for me to sign that ILA? At this point, it should be less than 25K, Dean?
Yep, that's where I was going to go.
Yeah, because less than 25K, I can sign it. I just want you guys to be aware in case you had concerns, and anything changes, I'll come back to you in June. All right? Once, twice, and sold. Okay, thank you. Section six, moving along here, Consent Agenda. We have the City Council Study Session of April 2nd, we have the regular City Council of April 12, the City Council Study Session of April 26, and we have the payment of the May 2022 bills as represented. Do I have a motion for that?
I've got a quick question before we do this as a consent.
All right. Or taking something out. No, no problem. Yeah.
Sure. It's just in 61 and 62, former City Attorney Giulio's name is misspelled in a couple of different places, so it'd be good to demonstrate respect and spell his name correctly. There is great. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Muramoto, is your hand still up or? You're okay. All right. So we're asking now to approve the Consent Agenda with the Corrections to the Spelling of Giulio's Names in those two different minutes. Is there a motion to? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Okay, Administrative Reports. First up, Administrative Report, Dean?
Yep, thanks. A little bit light on that right now, we've been going so heavily on meeting to meeting. The only thing I did want to bring up to everybody is that, that Chief Kolding will be out of state on vacation, and Lieutenant Hanson will be acting chief in his absence. That starts tomorrow. So just a quick heads up to everybody. And really, really fast. I was, what do, I guess I was, I was just looking for a little feedback. Do you like bringing up the target issues? Do you, are you happy with just looking at them each month? Or do you want me to kind of bring them up again and kind of highlight some areas that we are making some progress on? What? I could have done it already, I suppose, but.
Right, it's the first item under your 7.1.
Yeah.
So those are the key projects going on, and this is your accountability to where we are, if it's even started or if it's still underway or not.
Yeah, real fast, I was just, we, we started to work on the IT Services Contract, and the the financial, the annual report for finances is due to the state at the end of this month. We're working hard on that and reviewing that. The overlays are done. The Medina Building ILA is in the hands of Medina, and we did the Arbor Day thing, so making some good progress.
Great. Again, hopefully that's helpful for you, Council, to kind of appreciate some of the other projects that are going on and where they are. All right. Thank you. Rich, how about a building report?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Rich. I see Councilman Friedman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was slow to the trigger. Can we get an update on getting fiber into the building? So you can improve your internet service, especially for remote meetings and all the other things we're doing?
Yeah, it has been something that has kind of been falling by the wayside, just with all the additional meetings and things we've been doing. Just need some bandwidth to make it happen. Okay, no pun intended on the bandwidth, sorry.
I was going to say that was a good, good one.
Well, this seems like something that can help everybody do their job better. If you need some help, you may call on me. I know some people.
I know a guy.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So.
All right, Rich, now we're at yours.
Well, good evening again. I'm starting to get really busy in the Building Department. Since April 12, we've gotten three new homes in, plus, you know, a handful of remodels. We've had a bunch of pre-app meetings, so I'm looking at in the next four to six weeks, five, five more new houses will be coming in. So we're going to be on track to meet our, looks like our projection for this year for the new houses, so.
Who would have thought that, right? We were.
Yeah, we started off real slow, but it's really coming all in right now.
Good boy. Appreciate that.
All right.
Okay. Any comments from that?
I wanted to say thank you for the update to the permitting report. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. All right, very good. It looks like Sean's poised and ready for his Public Works Report.
That's right. I think I am. And if I could get Dean once again to share the screen and have the PowerPoint on my, my surface, that'd be fantastic. So another good month. We've got lots of, lots of little things going on. One of the things coming up is, you know, in the spirit of all the fun things, it's National Public Works Week next week, so that's super exciting. APWA, the American Public Works Association, has a Ready and Resilient theme this year, so we'll probably do some informational-type posts. Social media, nothing super exciting, but something else to be aware of, so. If you wouldn't mind scrolling down to the first one, Dean? So the first one was, maybe you guys saw the pictures of the ducks. That was kind of a fun little thing that apparently happens more than I would have guessed, enough that we have little teeny tiny nets to catch ducks with out of the catch basin. So Tyler did a good job of wrangling those guys, which are surprisingly difficult to catch, because they swim down the pipe further than you would have guessed and sit down there and scream. But we got them, we got them all and relocated them back over to Clyde Lock, so that was sort of a fun, fun, silly thing for a day, it felt like. So I anticipate some more DOE updates and more things coming up. I mean, again, that's just an ever-evolving project, so I know that there's construction and maintenance standards that are coming up.
Okay. Glad it's not just me.
Yeah. Let's give Sean a moment to regroup. My University of Washington, you know, alumni commentary would be that, you know, we need a husky to take on these ducks, so. That's right. There you go. There you are, you're back, Sean. Okay.
Somebody snuck in the door and is using the Wi-Fi. Yeah. Anyway, I apologize. Where did I get cut off at then?
You're right with the, the field, the annual field screen. He just got done the TIP work.
Okay, perfect. So, so yeah, field screen and TIP work is coming up, which is actually something in the next slide, or an oncoming slide. Please roll on. Okay, so the overlay project was a big activity. It was actually really neat. So it was a quick hitting job, in and out, more or less in a week. It was a good opportunity for Public Works and the crew members to provide some oversight and, and sort of a little bit of inspection and onsite construction monitoring. So it was neat to see. Work went very smooth. Some, one thing that we found was some very thin, very thin pavement in some of the neighborhoods. So we had breakthrough, which is not ideal, just, just efficiently thick, you know, less than two-inch pavement section. So we did end up going over about 100 tons of hot mix, so that's a reasonably large amount, but we had corresponding underruns in other places. And right now, it looks like we'll probably end up, you know, roughly $10,000 under the the authorized budget, based on the buildings that we're seeing. On that picture over on the right, that was a section over off 98th in the backhoe, so there was a strange little bump that was going on in there, and there was a lot of heavy root intrusion into the, into the sub, the sub base. So it took a pretty good amount of roots out of there, as much as we could reach and get it out, and then rebuilt that section. So hopefully that'll not come up in the future, so.
Good job.
All right, next one, please. So Small Drains Program, something that I neglected to mention in the last one, I apologize, on 17th is the schedule. So I did update in that 17th memo, there is a updated kind of timeline with the project. So it gives some date, or not date, but day timeframes to look at for major tasks like right-of-way and then design and then bidding. So I hope you guys find that useful, and though that was something we've discussed in the past, is looking at, so what would it take overall? Now, there's no date, dates assigned to that, but it gives you an idea of timeframe. So as we move through, it's sort of a way to gauge how that will progress, hopefully, so.
When was that last updated? Like, has it changed since the packet came out, or has it been?
Nope.
Okay.
No, yeah, so the one that's in the 17th memo had an image with the, yeah, and I totally forgot about it. Yep.
You're good.
So, yeah, in there, and that was updated very, well, very recently. So there is a little bit of overlap in the, you know, the right-of-way, some of the right-of-way stuff might not be finalized until, you know, it'll finalize with project design. So there is some overlapping bits, but once you get out of design and easements, the bidding phase and the construction phase are pretty well defined, so. But your, your huge variable is in right-of-way. That's, that's the nature of the beast. We can go back to the report really fast. Thank you, Dean, for driving. So, yeah, and the Small Drain, so that's the one part I forgot to mention, and the rest of the project is similar with 17th. The surveys collected, they're putting base maps together. And then the next slide, and pavement evaluation, this has to do with the tip, the transportation improvement projects, the transportation improvement program. Had a good conversation with the regional engineer from the Transportation Improvement Board, TIB. I know a lot of acronyms. But something that was great that we found out, and an item I was just about to have the, the crew go out and start collecting, was our pavement rating. So traditionally, Clyde Hill has done predominant failure types on its, on its mapping, and that's something that we have in lots of different GIS maps and lots of different exhibits we've used in the past. But what we're lucky is the small city, and I haven't had the experience of having in the past, is TIB's engineers actually perform the pavement evaluations for us as a small city. So a really neat service. They just did it in the summer of '21, so we have really great up-to-date data that's going to help inform our transportation improvement program. So that's really great news. And then on top of that good news, TIB also has a special small cities program that they're kicking off for crack sealing. So this is a non-competitive, tells how much you need up to a certain amount of money type, type project. So it's, they said to keep it under about 40,000, and again, it's a 10% match, so that's a really great preservation technique that we can utilize.
Job.
And that is all I have, and I think that's the end of the report.
Great.
Very good. And then you have a code compliance list. I know that Sarah keeps that up, and that's making sure we're being visible with what we're working on year-to-date. Hopefully that's helpful. Any comments or questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Good job. Thank you, Sean. Lisa, Finances.
Hello, hello. Similar, I can't see if anybody's arm is raised and/or has a question, so please feel free to interrupt. Pretty simple report tonight. We ended the month of April with an overall operating surplus. This is typical for Aprils for us. And we ended up with about a $433,000 positive month. Overall, city revenues so far have totaled about $2.2 million this year, and are actually about 11.8% above our year-to-date budget targets. I will say this is large part due to REIT deposits again, which are extremely high because home sales have been so strong, and at the end of last year and the first quarter of this year, I think that it's likely that that will taper off a little bit as interest rates. And at the end of last year and the first quarter of this year, I think that it's likely that that will taper off a little bit as interest rates are now increasing. Our sales tax and utility tax revenues are continuing to outperform our budget expectations. Development revenue is still behind where it should be. However, it does sound like there's some positive stuff in the hopper there. Interest rates are slowly starting to improve. However, it's been a really rough month for the market, if anybody's paying attention. So, some of our interest gains are being offset by that. On our development revenue highlights, again, we started off really slow, just like Rich said. We've only had officially two new single-family residential permits issued so far this year. We have budgeted for 13 new homes. It sounds like, as Rich remains optimistic, that's likely to happen. April reported 10 home sales with an average sale price of $4.8 million. So, as you might notice on the graph, our home sales have exceeded 2021's numbers and 2028 or 2018 levels as well. REIT deposits for the month were $148,000 and are about 71% ahead of our budget for this time normally. We don't expect this trend to sustain all year again. As I mentioned, interest rates for home sales are going up, and the housing market is starting to level off just a little bit. But there was a very intense push to get in while the market was still hot. On the next page, just a quick glance. As for expenditures, we are overall under budget, which is great. We are paying our $315,000 payment for the first half of our fire service for our contract with Bellevue Fire. So, that will eat up a good chunk of that amount. As mentioned earlier, you can see that April ended with an operating surplus and an ending general fund balance of $823,000, so that's great. Our LGIP, we have broke a new record. We made it to 0.4% interest for earnings for the month. So, we're, we're making progress. We're almost at a half of a percent. Unfortunately, our TVI report is included, and you will be able to see on there, there were some losses this particular month, because the market has been a little bit rough. The next item I have for you, see if I can share this screen. And Dean, you might be able to see this, you might be able to pull this up better than I can. This is the termination of premium pay for essential workers memo that's in your packet. See if, are you able to bring that up, Dean, or should I attempt to do it again here?
We got.
But if you give me a minute.
I know it's a lot for you. Um, this is just something that the council asked to be added at the special study session on April the 26th, but it was tabled because of time constraints. So, as the memo states, the city stopped providing premium pay as of April 1st. This was due, of course, to the reopening of City Hall to our full operating status after the governor lifted masking mandates. It's also related to the restrictions that are placed on the funding by the ARPA grant program. In line with this decision, as we talked about earlier, Governor Inslee has issued a proclamation 20-28.16, which will rescind the emergency proclamation related to in-person public meetings starting on June 1st. So, we do feel like this was the right choice for us, and managing that going forward was not going to work with the grant funding in the way that ARPA allows. So, I am happy to answer any questions on either the report or related to the ARPA funding for premium pay.
Right, council, questions or comments? Good job. Oh, hang on, council member Moore.
I'm confused about the, the premium pay issue. We approved doing it, I think in November. And I don't believe that the council approved stopping it. And yet, it got stopped. How did that work? How did that happen?
The memo that, or the, rather, the resolution that was passed allows for administration to choose to stop doing that. In our case, when we looked over the limits that were allowable within the ARPA funding, it did not make sense for us to continue as a number of our employees were not able to qualify for that amount anymore, and we would risk having to pay that out of our general fund, which council instructed us not to do. They wanted us to strictly use ARPA funding. From a managerial standpoint, it wasn't something that we could continue administering, and it didn't make sense, given that we were all back to operating at full capacity.
That's not my question. That's not my question. But the council has budgetary authority. We, we decide what we spend money on and what we don't spend money on. We passed a resolution to pay people with these funds. And then all of a sudden, it was announced that we're not doing that anymore. So, when you say that there was a resolution that gave authority to stop, are you saying that that was in the resolution that we passed in November?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Fine, then as long as you had the authority to do that. I still think it's a poor decision. And I think we should have maxed out all the employees. I know that higher-paid employees weren't eligible, but it sure seems like a bait and switch. I can't, I can't believe that'd be good for city employees morale, but we'll leave it at that.
Alright, thank you. Other comments? Alright, thanks a lot, Lisa. Appreciate that. Good report. Chief, please report. You come off mute. You'll find it. Here you are.
Dean, or John, if you can pull up my high-speed slideshow there. And while I'm waiting for that, I'll, just a quick note. We passed our audit through the State Criminal Justice Training Commission on our training mandates for the year. We just received our certification, which is also a part of our accreditation files, our ongoing accreditation. Not in my report too, but we just recently updated all of our policy. I don't know if some of you are aware that the state recently passed a law that marijuana has been taken out of all of our state laws and replaced with the word cannabis, and that's also been done in our policy manual. There we go. Thank you. I think I reported in the last month or two about this ABLE project. It, it has to do with, it's the active bystander for law enforcement. It was a program developed out of Georgetown University. This, Washington State has adopted this through our training commission. We have a certain amount of time before all of our officers go through a certain amount of training in active bystander. Essentially, what it comes down to is it's see something, say something. And there, there is a hyperlink there or whatever in your, on the, in the council agenda, whatever, if anybody wants to go. And actually, there's quite a bit of information on that website through Georgetown University. So, we will be, we're currently getting a couple of letters. We're a unique community, obviously, in that we, we do have some faith-based groups in our community. So, we'll get letters for support from them, and then we get a letter of support from the mayor and then one from the police chief, so that we become a certified agency in this ABLE, a national certification, so. Next slide, please. Does anybody have any questions on the ABLE project?
No.
Okay, Councilman Friedman, last month I sent out a kind of a PowerPoint on all the major legislature that passed this year for law enforcement. A majority of it was fixing what they had messed up, I'll say, the year before. The first one, 1719, where this has to deal with Clyde Hill, for the most part, would be if we chose to go the route of getting less lethal munitions, foam rounds or something. That's, that's the only way that this would, that this bill would affect our agency. Next, next. This actually, this one is bringing it back to what it was a couple of years ago. This just gives us the authority to use physical force. 90% of the time, that's just putting handcuffs, somebody in handcuffs. This is, you know, for, it takes it back again to being able to do that with minors and mental, emotional, to get them the necessary help they need. Next one. And this, this is quite a lengthy one, but it, but it comes down to, it just, it just redefines deadly force against another person and a peace officer's authorization to use that and what is necessary, so. I think that was it. Is there another slide, Dean?
That's it.
Yep, that's it. I'll give you, there's, we had a little incident. I don't know if some of you may have heard of it. I know news can spread pretty quickly through the community when it has to do with our schools or whatever. But this, last night, late last night, the schools rece, or a parent saw a social media post of a couple of kids from the school. They had what the mother ended up saying was a replica gun, and all they, they, it was a picture of them in the mirror. They were holding it. They said, "Today is our day. Everybody better respect us." There was no directed threat against the school or any particular individuals, but we took the extreme precaution of trying to locate these kids. They don't currently live where the school has them. We had Bellevue officers sitting at the bus stop to make sure they wouldn't get on a bus to go to Chinook. And then we had four officers up at Chinook this morning for about, it was probably about three hours or so while school got underway. The district decided to go ahead and go, since there were no direct threats, decided to go business as usual today. But we were extra presence all day for the school, so. Just today, we did receive email from Yarle Point. They are going ahead again after not doing it for the last couple of years. Their 4th of July parade and celebration and street dance. Yeah. They are, they are moving forward again, which is always a great time. It brings in so many people from the community, our points community. So, it's, if you have not, have not seen it before, I suggest it, so. But I think that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Good job. Thanks for updating us on those house bills that got revised. It's always tricky to stay on top of those changes, so thank you for that.
And I think there's a couple more we're hoping for that get fixed back. We just want them back the way they were before they got messed up.
I know, it's limiting. Alright, thank you, and wish you a wonderful vacation as you take off tomorrow.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, great. We've already done, we're done with seven. We have nothing on eight. We have nothing on nine. We already did 10. Now, we're on 11. So, mayor's meeting, so the North Mayor meeting that I had on the third, just typical round robins, a lot of openings in many of the cities of key staff. And they are also identifying what programs and special events, so they're gonna start back up. So, it's kind of nice to, to see that. And I would like to hear how the public meeting went last night in Kirkland for La Quinta. Penny Sweet was gearing up for that, so it'll be interesting to kind of hear outcomes. So, I'll ask her to see if she can share. The other is a public health meeting on the third. The BA2, as I've mentioned in the past, is certainly present, loud and strong. Just doing an indication of my organization at Swedish. Our numbers today have surpassed the number of people at, even during Omicron. I have more staff out, ill, COVID-positive than we even had with the massive Omicron surge. The issue, the big difference on this, they're not being, patients are not being hospitalized, and that is a blessing, thank goodness. The vaccinations and the boosting are working, and those that are not, they're the ones that are making it up into the hospital. So, please be attentive to vaccinations, and if you're due for boosters. And if you're not sure, go to the LabCorp's or a lab and get your antibodies drawn. If it's over 700, you should be well protected. So, we're still in this for a while, people, so stay, stay well, stay healthy. Okay, that is that. Eastside ETP, Councilmember Muramono, anything to add?
Nope, ETP is Friday, and Wyra is next month, so nothing to add on neither of those.
Okay. We've had, I think when we last left off, we had the Sound Cities in-person meeting, which was just a gathering. It felt a little awkward, and then they quickly went back to virtual with all that's going on presently. But SCA this month is counseled to take a month off. I think the important one there is Deanna Dawson, who has been the mainstay for SCA for the last 10 years, is actually taking on the role of CEO of AWC. So, AWC gains wonderfully with her leadership, fantastic person, and they're out to a national hunt to replace her role at the SCA. It's very important. As a small city, again, the whole purpose of SCA was to make sure that the bigger cities doesn't drown out or outvote the needs and the desires of small cities. And so, I think SCA has done really well to kind of balance the needs and hear the voices of all of us. So, Deanna has done really well with making sure committees and structures and stuff are set up, so that we're right alongside those, those discussions. So, let's hope that they can find a good replacement. Angela Barney is Mayor Semelmish, right, or Redmond? Oh, we're goodness sakes, you think I don't remember. She is president of SCA for this year, is elected, so she's gonna help kind of keep some leadership functions going in the short term. So, she's gonna play double duty. Let me see, Councilmember Friedman, do you have anything from your SCA meeting, the, your RLSJC, the, did they meet? Oh, you're on mute.
We did not have a meeting on the RS, LJ, whatever. And that's an acronym. This could take me a while to get. Anyway, we did not have a meeting with them, and Mizwak is this week, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, keep us informed. Councilmember Muramono, Wyra, eight.
Sorry, nothing to report.
Okay, and then EMAC, Emergency Management Advisory Committee. We have caucus tomorrow. We're going over some infrastructure. I found it interesting. We'll be hearing how the fuel supply infrastructure is going to be mapped and looked at and overseen and inventoried, and that's, you know, all types of fuel, including electric out there. And so, I'll be curious how that particular element is gonna be attended to. So, it should be a good presentation tomorrow. Anything else for under Section 11? Councilmember Jones.
Right, I actually have a Norcom.
Thank you, sorry about that. Please share.
Well, it's not really a report. It's just saying they're actually gonna have a governing meeting this Friday. So, I'm gonna go with Lieutenant Hanson and see my first meeting, so I'll report next month.
Alright, how exciting. Thank you. Okay, then we have Section 12, which is just trying to placeholder and drop in as we pick up ideas and needs, and so we don't lose them anywhere. We have the special counsel study session on the 24th. Again, we'll be sending a doodle out to see when we can secure the time for that. And Councilmember Friedman, you had also this memo related to code enforcement. I don't know if that's a topic you wanted us to add on the agenda. Just needed some guidance on this.
Well, the purpose of the, of what I sent was, was actually to show the inconsistencies I, I'm feeling we have within code enforcement. And sometimes it's, sometimes it's related to enforcement, sometimes it's related to the specific code. But there's documents and expectations of the public with respect to some, some of our ordinances. And, and this was an example that I found, that I wanted to, that I wanted, that I wanted to share and look for any input if somebody had that. To me, as we move our way through our, our priorities, and maybe with respect to the committee, when they get started working on those eight items we need to work on, this is an example that I hope that can help facilitate the direction and the alignment between the council and staff that we provide to the planning commission. And, and what, it also points out, and I know we've already taken a few steps in this area, that we have expectations of the public to do certain things, but the information we provide and tell them to do. But the information we provide and tell them to do, that we claim that we have in the, in the city or on the website, isn't up to date, isn't always there. And makes it harder for the public to do what we're asking them to do. And that also then relates back to enforcement and sometimes unintentional enforcement against some of the public. So.
Okay.
I want to, I thought it was a really well-written memo. I'd recommend that folks read it. This is a good place to socialize documents ahead of more serious discussion. So people can get a sense of them. I think it's worth reading. It does make me wonder when we're going to get back to enforcement. Cause I think a while back, there's a request for additional feedback around code enforcement. And I'm not sure, Councilmember Friedman, this is part of the, the point, which is when does that land on an agenda again? Separate from Title 17.
We, is that to me? I'm sorry.
No, which is just when, when, when does the enforcement conversation happen again?
Yeah, at this point, I'm assuming it's part of our title, of our, our Title 17 discussion. But Dean Rolla, maybe you have some insight on how you want to proceed as well.
Sure. I think that it would certainly be fair game and one option for us to, one route for us to go once we pick up that land use committee enforcement, certainly a good place to start.
Okay. I guess my question is, is whether we expected there to be any enforcement conversation separate from Title 17?
I don't believe we had anything imminently planned at the moment.
No.
So we can tuck that down in there. It'll most likely come up with that group. Yep.
Yeah, I would, and, and in for, the problem, the benefit of moving enforcement and making it maybe even the highest priority is that relates back to policies and how we work with our community on the issues we deal with. However, as you enforce the policies or our existing codes are impacted directly by that. And it kind of leads us to that next step. So.
Yeah. We're anxious to make sure the codes and everything are reflective and current and updated. And yet we're, we're, it's tricky in terms of under which conditions do we enforce? Yeah. So that interplay is so difficult. I get that.
It, and it does. However, if there's one area that we, you know, that enforcement itself really points to, it's a consistent and equitable treatment of the community and of the, of those who are impacted. And I'm not, it's not my way of saying we're not, it's not intentional, but the, but, but other codes and other policies interact with the enforcement and then set us off in different directions for different people.
Okay. Thank you, Dean.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I misspoke. So to answer better, we have actually, staff has started some work on taking a look at the enforcement section of title of that chapter. And so we do have the beginnings of some, some work on that section of the code that should actually be ready for that committee.
Cause it's one of the.
Once it makes rounds.
Right, is it one of the 17?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought so. Yeah. Okay. So it's timely and it can be that. And then it might be a little bit more based on if it's beyond Title 17 enforcement. We hear that. Okay, good. All right. We'll make sure that that's brought up in that discussion with the work team to start with, as we kind of label that all out. Perfect. Okay. And then June 14th, you can see the agenda is starting to kind of play out there. We'll just keep dropping in as we get topics there. So it's pretty templated at this point. And then we'll placeholder the June 28th study session and just kind of work with that. And then we had added, we've already talked about 12.4, so that's already done deal. And then the 12.5, Councilmember, God, sorry, Dean. You wanted to have the discussion of agenda calendar dream committee. You want to explain just a little bit more so we can kind of figure out.
I think that Councilmember Jones and I will try to caucus with the city administrator and see if we can hammer something out that doesn't need its very own, that will not need its very own session.
Okay, great. And we'll hear something back. Appreciate that. If you will indulge me, I just had a question because I know it came up and Sean on the spot. But we passed the proclamation for the public safety law enforcement next week. And we did just hear that Sean said that it's also Public Works Week coming up on March, you know, May 15th. Is that right, Sean?
Yes, I think it's the 15th and the 19th, I think.
So I, I am totally prepared if council is, is willing to support that I would equally put forth a level of proclamation to recognize and honor the hardworking public works team that we have within Clyde Hill, if that is so desired by the council. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. We will craft up a nice notation for that. Appreciate it. Okay. We have nothing else on our listing. I appreciate that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion about adjourning? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. We will unanimously adjourn. Thank you, guys. We did pretty well with the meeting tonight. Appreciate your timing and support. Thank you, our residents that listened and observed.